Meeting called to order, please. Please join in a salute of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Ms. DeLea?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Mia Chow?
Here.
Ms. Chune? Seven present.
I'd like to welcome everyone, members of LSAA, and I understand members from the Maury School also who are here. Welcome to the meeting, and I'd like to welcome everyone who are watching us from home to the meeting as well. Today, we'll start the meeting with a special order of business, and we do a spotlight on excellence, the Maury School, the DESI School of Recognition. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So after the pandemic, our schools have been catching up, and the Maury School has made remarkable progress with that through a combination of efforts where they are not just in classrooms, but have as many wraparound and support services for students as possible. And the results have been tremendous, not just because I'm saying it, but the Department of Education has recognized the Maury School and it officially referred to as a school of recognition. So we wanted to acknowledge that tonight. We have the principal, Ms. McGlaughlin, in the audience along with some of her school community. If you are amenable to it, I'd like to offer Ms. McGlaughlin an opportunity to speak.
Well, the applause goes to all of you and to all our students. Mr. Mayor, members of the school committee, Superintendent Skinner, chiefs, thank you for inviting us here to be the spotlight on excellence. You have a very long agenda in front of you, so I'll try to keep this brief. I won't explain how this designation happens because that's an item for tonight for you when you get to accountability data. But one thing we do really well at the Maury School is we take that satellite, that global data, and now the new term is street data, but taking our qualitative data and really triangulating and figuring that out so that each kid gets what they need. So we thought we would provide you with some of that street-level data so that you can have that same picture of the Maury School other than just looking at some numbers. So we came up, Aria has our sign here. When we did this, we nerded it up, and we did look at all of our qualitative data, and we found some themes, and our themes, we've got our three F's. The students all said friends, and teachers all said students, so our friends, our faculty, and our families are a big theme about why we've made so much, had so much success. The other main themes were that our school, everyone there is kind, we have a safe culture both physically and intellectually. We all said that the special resources we have and the extra help that we offer students was remarkable, as well as our special classes and programs. So here are some of the quotes they actually said. It was really interesting from my perspective analyzing it because the faculty all gave credit to the students and the families and each other, and the students all gave credit to the teachers and the staff. So it was really interesting for me as the leader to see that. So some of the things our faculty said is our students are respectful and happily engaged, and families are hardworking and supportive. We honor students as individuals and meet them where they are while fostering student agency through independent goal-setting and assessment. It is a caring school environment. Educators have high expectations for themselves and their students. This one, one by heart as well. Even our cafeteria staff give wait time to students and give them the supports they need, something we've been working on really hard. We use data well to figure out next instructional steps for each and every student, not the, not some of them, not the most, all of them. And in the end, we keep the welfare of our students above all else to ensure that they feel safe to learn. And then my favorite, no offense to my wonderful faculty here, but it's, it's what the kids say. These are the best ones. The Maury School, and these are verbatim. The Maury School is a great place to learn and grow because we all feel safe here with the teachers and all the staff. We learn a lot of strategies. Some people go to groups for extra help. We are always kind to people. We grow as readers. We grow to be respectful of others. We grow to be role models for the first, second, third, and kindergarteners. I think the Maury is a great place because of the people in our school. Another student. They make you feel safe right away, and we learn different strategies for different subjects, and we're respectful to everyone. We all help when you're stuck on a problem for math. We do partner work. We can make you feel happy, and we can pull you into a group to see what you're working on. Another student. If you're stuck on something, the teachers care and they help, or one of your classmates. Sometimes the teachers give us tests to see if we grew, and then when we get our scores, the teachers can help us on our vocabulary or math or anything. Another student. When we don't know something, we go into groups and partner together. We also have conferences with our teachers so that we know what we need help with. We learned how to build more and more stamina. Another student. We help each other, like with intervention groups. Teachers help when I'm struggling, and friends help if I'm stuck. Another one. We have lots of nice books. And another, we have lots of good books in our book nooks. One reason the Maury School is a great place to learn and grow is the way they try to include new people to our school if they're from a different culture. Related to that, we learn about people's cultures, and I get to meet people I've never met. Like, one day, I met a kid from Brazil, and now we're friends. The teachers are caring and helpful. They stop to help a student understand how to do the task they need help on, allowing the student to continue thriving, learning, and going to their full potential. I think that means we're doing a good job on vocabulary on that one. So we have specials classes, like art, which make our brains bigger and stronger. And these are the ones that truly touched me because they're so simple, but they say it all. When I am here, it makes me feel safe. The teachers help my brain grow and keep me safe. And this one, which a child gives a definition of pedagogical content knowledge better than I do. The teachers teach us a lot, but they don't make it hard to learn. So those are all exact quotes that our fourth graders wrote. They took the MCAS last year of the scores you'll be looking at later. So again, we're more than numbers. We're very grateful that, that almost every single subgroup met or exceeded their targets that DESI set up. We're very proud of that, but as our staff decided, that just gives us motivation to keep going. It's, it's never a rest for us. So thank you again for recognizing the Maury School and all you do for, for us, because a lot of these things are because of decisions you've made. Like having open architects approving that contract, for example, really helped improve our data. Or moving to school-based budgeting allowed us to have some of our intervention teachers that you heard the kids talk about. So some of your decisions really did matter in helping us do this, so thank you for your support.
Any comments or questions by any of the members? Ms. Thompson?
So I want to thank you so much for what you said, and you are indeed more than numbers, and it's evident in what the young people said. As a former teacher, I always looked for what the kids said because that kind of gives you that compass because they do not lie. They, they're quite honest whether you want to hear it or not. And I also really loved in hearing that the groups are normalized. Because I remember when I was a kid, that was like the, you didn't want to hear, you had to go to group, right? And so to hear that they're being normalized in such a powerful way really gives me hope. Thank you for the young people who gave such, you know, poignant, wonderful statements. And the last thing I will say is you use the term equity, and I thank you for using it in the correct term. Because I've heard lots of people talk about equity and what it is. Equity just means every kid gets what they need, and clearly you're doing that, so thank you for that, and continue doing the great work. Thank you so much.
Any other members? Mr. Lea?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that Maury School is one of the best schools that I like to go visit when I go visit schools. And yeah, the last kid said it right, that you taught them a lot, but you made it easy for them to learn, and I feel that way too when I walk through the schools. So congratulations and thank you all for all the staff at Maury School for doing such a great job. Thank you.
Any other members? Any other comments? Ms. Moore?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm really just going to echo what's been said, but I mean, what an impressive thing to start our meeting with today. Thank you very, very much for anyone who watches these meetings, participates. When we get the good news, it's just a whole different world, so thank you very much for that. You know, the, the staff at the Maury has a very long and storied career, and, and the work that's been done there, it's really not surprising, but it's really encouraging to see what a, what a positive outcome that not just we can see it here in Lowell, but DESI as a, as an institution has been able to target it as well. So I'd offer my thanks certainly to your leadership, to your faculty, to your students, and ultimately to your families. I mean, the greatest strength really comes from bringing together all those different forces and kind of getting them all working in the same direction, so congratulations. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here none. It's just an objection, just make a brief comment from up here. Thank you, Dr. Kate McGlaughlin. I'm going to call you Dr. Kate, as your students call you at the schools. A lot, a lot easier for me as well. You know, well deserved, and DESI does a great job recognizing the right school, the staff and the students. And I want to make a comment. Thank you for holding up that sign. I don't know if the camera caught that sign or not. Would you mind bringing the sign to the podium so the camera can catch that, so the public at home can read what it says on the signs, you know, faculty? Maybe I can hold it, or maybe one of the members can hold it.
This is Aria. She's one of the best Maury Tigers. She is now a fifth grader at the Daily, but came to support us tonight.
Now, don't cover your face there. Let me just hold this, this way, hold this, hold this with me. So this is a sign that says faculty, kind, resources, and extra help, friends, special classes and programs, family, safe culture, and of course, the Maury School Tigers. So congratulations, well deserved. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, for highlighting the excellence at one of the schools in the district. Great job. Thank you for being here.
Ms., Ms. McGlaughlin? Would you like to take a photo with the school committees? I mean, the staff?
We could do that, Mr. Lea. I think Mr. Superintendent would like to add a comment first. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I want to recognize the Maury School's staff, students, and families who have come out tonight. Thank you all for being here. We're proud of you, and you do really powerful work, as obvious at this stage. I'd also like to highlight that it's indicative of Dr. McGlaughlin, the culture at the Maury School, that she used the staff and the students' own words to describe what the success is. So modest and humble, but, but she is a wonderful leader and does so by example, and so I wanted to recognize that. Final comment. We're going to put Dr. McGlaughlin to work. We want her to explain in great detail to the rest of our school leaders what she's been doing at, at the Maury School that has led to such a wonderful recovery from the pandemic. So thanks to Dr. McGlaughlin, staff, students, families from the Maury School. We'll, we'll benefit yet more from your success by having you share with others. Thank you.
Mr. Lea, did you have something else to, to add? Was?
Just like all the, every time when we have a spotlight on excellence, we, we have a group photo. I just want to.
Excellent idea, Mr. Lea. Would, would you mind, Dr. Kate, with staff and students and family, come to the front, take a picture with all the school committee members? I think it could fit everybody into one photo.
Yes, I can. I'll go up a little higher and see. Do you want to be in the photo, Wendy, or not? You're still here. All right, ready? One, two, three. Let's try one more camera just in case. Hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it. Going in? Ready? One, two, three. All right, great. No problem. Thank you. Hopefully it works. We'll check it out. Yeah, mine looks better. Let me send it to you.
Thank you all. Thank you for your support.
Take another picture for Facebook.
Okay, now we will continue on with the, the agenda. Section four, other minute. Need a motion to approve the special and regularly scheduled meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee of September 20th, 2023, and the placement filed by Ms. Moore, second by Ms. Thompson. In favor, say aye. Post say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. We now go to section five. This is the permission to enter. Any comments or question on the permission to enter? Any, anyone? Ms. Doherty?
Motion to approve?
Motion approved by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Lea. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. DeLea? Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chune?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Now we go to section six, which are the motions. The first two motions are mine. At this point, I would like to ask the vice chairwoman to come to the podium to chair the meeting while I ask you to call on me to discuss my two motions.
So motion 6.1 by Mayor Sakari Chow requests interim superintendent to remove field trip funds from the suspense account and report on their distribution to schools. Report to include the amount of field trip funds provided to each school as well as an account of how the amounts were calculated. I need a second on this motion by Ms. Martin. Mia Chow?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. This, this motion, it was put on a few months ago, and it, it was passed unanimously, and I was not here to follow me to discuss it, so I'd like to bring this forward to have some discussion right now. The purpose of this, this motion and the field trip funds, just to remind the public there. I feel that, you know, some of the best experience that all of us have remember were the field trip days in, in our younger days from school. And they're not just trips to go have fun. They are very memorable for many students. It's one of the few opportunities that they get to, to get to travel. So this, the field trip is really an issue of equity for all the students across the district. At this point, I would like to ask the superintendent. It's great to have these funds available. I know that we might not have all, all the, the amount and how it would work in place yet, but what is the amount of money that would be available for the field trip funds, Mr. Superintendent? Through Madam Vice Chair to Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The committee approved in your, in, in the school department budget in spring, the committee has already approved the funds, $435,000. And that was calculated at $30 per student for the number of students we had in the district at that time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, again through Madam Vice Chair. To me, again, I, I, I might be out of touch a little bit with the type, the cost for the school trips, the cost. And so for, with $30 per student, can you give us an example, like what, what's a typical field trip for the classroom? Where would they go? I'm sure each classroom, well, the teacher would determine where to go, but what is a more typical field trip and how much would they cost? Would this include transportation, back lunches, or what have you? Because $30 to me doesn't sound like a lot in today's economies.
Thank you. So in one response, I think the, regardless of my answers tonight, I'd like the opportunity to put together a response that would give specific examples. So we're not, not just estimating. I'd like to give you some specific examples. But in my experience, field trips would be, for example, to the Museum of Science. Field trips might be to other, to Lowell museums and so forth. And if I may say so, they are of great benefit to students where, you know, not all the learning our students can, can be exposed to happens within the four walls of the classroom. And there, we have had students, for example, had not have any experience of farm animals, would be an example, when, when students go to a farm. We've had students who were studying the tides. The tides are caused by the motion of the moon, right? And they're learning about that, but students had never been to the ocean. And so you can take a field trip to Hampton Beach, and they take in, you know, the, the beach ecosystem, what, what, you know, what grows and what, what, you know, it takes place in that ecosystem, and also witness some, some tidal actions and so forth. For some students, they've never had that experience. I'm just adding to the idea that I think this is a wonderful motion and a very welcome one at, at our schools. I, estimating that, for convenience sake, I'm estimating that on average, a field trip might cost $10 entry fee per student, and $5 for busing for each student, so that'd be, say, $15 per student on average. So we'd have two field trips per, for, for students from this amount. That may be underestimating. Some admission fees will be much more than $10. Some field trips won't require an admission fee if you go to the beach, if you go to a park, you know, but, but on average, I think we could look to achieve two field trips from the funds that are being provided.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I have no more questions. I'm looking forward to the report.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we'll go to motion 6.1. Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor of this motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Motion passes. Thank you. Now we'll go to motion 6.2 by Mayor Sakari Chow. Request the interim superintendent report on the quality and quantity of lunch offerings for students. Information on how student satisfaction with lunches is monitored should be included, as well as information on how different tastes, such as preferences for ethnic foods, are accommodated. Second by Ms. Thompson. Mia Chow?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. This motion came to me by a few students. A couple of them were in the elementary, and a couple of them were from the high school, actually. And I understand that the school lunches have improved a lot over the years. Some of the comments I, I heard were, you know, Some of the comments I, I heard were, you know, you know, with Lowell, such a diverse school with students from all of the world, basically, and, you know, with different ethnic groups, there are different taste to, to food, obviously. Even what we call consider as, as mainstream, that's a great tasting food. I think, you know, some of the concern, or some of the questions would be, you know, how are the food, are they diversified enough to meet the taste of students from different cultures? Again, I know that the health, the diet, the nutrition has to be part of the equations, but probably reports, I'd like to see, you know, different mix of foods that just would cover just a different taste.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Delay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to say it's a good motion. Kids have, in the past, have come to me and talked about making the food better. That's why I often go to the high school and, and have lunch with them. And I feel that there were days when lunch were excellent, so I, I feel good about what we have so far. So, I support this motion. Thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye? Aye, the ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, for chairing that, that couple of motions for me. We now continue with the rest of the motions. Motion six point three is a motion by Mr. Rossi, request the superintendent to give school committee a plan of action for communication in regards to having meetings, scheduling auxiliary meetings such as executive session, emergency meetings. Will we be polled, second by Ms. Thompson, Mr. Rossi?
Yes, this motion just comes from it, the past month or so where I noticed that we're just told when the executive session is or when the, when a meeting may be usually, or a subcommittee meeting, usually we're polled to see if we're able to make it on a certain night. So I was just wondering if that will go back to effect or will we just be told going forward?
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there's been no change to how subcommittees should be arranged? Any change that you noticed in the last month is down to new staffing, including new superintendent, and so I apologize if that's not happened. Members should of course be polled, should of course be polled so that we make sure that it's a suitable night for you. In my experience, that's happened a couple of different ways. Sometimes all members of that subcommittee are polled together. Sometimes the chairperson is polled and, and arranged and so on. But yes, each member of the subcommittee should be polled about a suitable night and that will happen as of now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions by any of the members? Hearing none, on the favors, aye? Oppose, say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. The next motion is also by Mr. Rossi. It's motion six point four to request the superintendent supply the email or text message in regards to incidents that happened throughout the week at schools, second by Ms. Chun. Mr. Rossi?
Yes, I, this was also in regards to just, we used to receive at the end of the day anything that might have happened in regards to a school situation that involved emergency vehicles or whatnot. And I noticed that since I did submit this motion on Friday, that you have been, it has been happening, so thank you very much for that.
Mr. Superintendent?
I could give the same response to the, any changes in, in to past practice that got to do with new staff including new superintendent and, yeah, that, that is understood. And I want to assure you, there's no change in, in practice or policy around that. All stu, all school incidents in a day that are filed with us should be reported to you and will be.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Martin?
I think that's great and I, I just think going forward, I mean, I, I do think that should include any after-school activities, things that, I, I, I mean, I think it's generally when we're seeing reports in local media and whatnot, when we haven't gotten anything, the rule of thumb is that if the committee should be informed of things before there's any kind of publicity. So that would just be my, my kind of recommendation as a, as a, as we go forward.
Understood, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, on the favors, aye? Oppose, say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. The next motion is also by Ms. Del Rossi, request the superintendent to continuously update the community as to the state of transportation and district so that no family, student is left without a bus and assure there is a plan in regards to substitute transportation. Second by Ms. Doherty, Mr. Rossi?
Yes, this motion is entirely just so no family is left hanging or that a student be waiting at a bus stop with no bus that's going to come. And we have, I know we've had some discussion about best ways to go about this. But I just want to make sure parents are updated consistently and that there's constant communication because whether elementary school, middle school, it's still going to be a concern, no matter what level it is, if they're left with no transportation at some point. And I know the district, you guys are working on as much as you possibly can to make this happen. So I appreciate that, but I just want to make sure parents are consistently communicated with. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this? Hearing none, on the favors, aye? Oppose, say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. The next motion is by, is a joint motion by Mr. Rossi and Ms. Thompson. A motion to have presentation by the district. I'm sorry? I have six point seven, it's a joint motion, was there someone, some?
There's one by six point six, Stacy has one too.
Oh, there, skip one, okay, thank you. Six point six, I skipped this, not by purpose. I'm going too fast. Six point six, motion by Ms. Thompson. Motion to receive definitive information regarding the status of the hiring process at the high school specifically to address student inability to use or access bathroom on each floor, second by Mr. Lee. Ms. Thompson?
So this is, you know, a serious issue and I know a number of my colleagues have brought it up in a variety of ways, but having just most recently spoken to two young people at the high school, I was very concerned about their inability to use and access a bathroom on each floor. I understand that there's issues of vaping and smoking which have caused bathrooms to be closed, but that's not acceptable that a young person needs to use the bathroom, has to go down two floors to do that and then wait potentially in a long line. I actually had one student tell me that they couldn't wait anymore, they lived close to the school, they left school to use the bathroom and then came back. So clearly jarring and unacceptable, so I'm just wondering what work on the hiring end has been done to secure more people to enable the young people to be able to use and access the bathroom? Thank you.
By any member? No comments or questions, on the favors, aye? Oppose, say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. The next motion, this is a joint motion by Mr. Rossi and Ms. Thompson. Motion to have presentation by the district schools mental health department to share ways, processes for students to access appointments and support, collaborate with each building website to provide information to students and families in an effort to dispel stigma surrounding areas and spectrum within mental health while ensuring access to services. Who would like to go first? Mr. Rossi, you've been volunteer?
Yes, seeing that October is Mental Health Awareness Month, I think it's important to assure that, that it's paid attention to the fact that a lot of mental illness is stigmatized and it affects an awful lot of students and that it's pretty status quo these days. And to allow them to be able to really realize that just because somebody may have a difference in learning or ADHD, that those all things are considered under the mental illness, under the DSM five. So just to make them really realize that they may be different, but it's not that different than everybody else. And we can all find different ways to learn and to cope with things because it does kind of snowball sometimes into more anxieties, more issues. And I want to say that actually this month is not Mental Health Awareness Month, it's Suicide Awareness Month. And I apologize for that. But it does snowball and we have seen this snowball in, into our school community and it causes many issues with students. And it, it just could have devastating effects. So just to really de-stigmatize the effects of this for all of our students is so important. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
I think that Mr. Rossi hit a lot of what I was going to say. October tenth is World Mental Health Day. And so we wanted to be really cognizant of not letting that time lapse without doing something to really bring the importance of mental health supports in. Quite frankly, there are access points within the school system, but honestly, I don't think everybody knows how they would get access to those mental health supports and I think that's really important. We've seen the number of bullying incidents and violence and just a lot of that. And I think a lot of that is not being able to work through mental health diagnoses or maybe undiagnoses. And I think just the supports are really necessary, so, and absolutely de-stigmatizing it. Unfortunately, several communities have a lot of stigma still attached to getting the supports that they need. And so I think that anything we can do to move, move away from that and again, let students and parents know what supports there are and how to access them, that'd be fantastic. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, on the favors, aye? Oppose, say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. That completes all the motions for tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lee?
May I, while we are on a topic of motion, under personal privilege, can I say something in regarding to after dark program?
Mr. Lee, yes.
Thank you. So, today and yesterday, there were people talking about the after dark program. The program that Ms. Desmond has been working on and has been, continued to improve. And it serves a great deal of, a number of high school students from Lowell High to take courses at, at the Greater Lowell Technical School. So I just wanted, I just want to ask Ms. Desmond if she can give us more information on, on the program, how the future going to look like and whatever you want to add to that. Would that be okay?
Okay, so just for clarification, this is a motion by?
And, and, and I would like to have a motion to ask Ms. Desmond to have a report on it.
Okay, Mr. Lee, you want to make that like, you want to suspend the rule? Personal privilege would be just a comment, but from the side of it, I think you want to make a suspension of the rule to make a motion on the floor?
To make a motion?
And to make, to make a motion.
And?
I, I would need to have a second on that, do you have a second by Ms. Martin? And just for clarification, could you just state the last part of your motion?
So, motion is to ask the superintendent to provide, to report on the after dark program. The, the state of the present, the present time and the future.
Okay.
And what programs that we have offering so far.
Okay.
Would that be, would that be good, Ms. Desmond?
Motion, motion by Mr. Lee, do you have a report on after dark program? Second by Ms. Thompson. Would anybody would like to make a comment right now or just gonna, would you like to wait for the report or would you like some comment right now?
I, I think it would be great to have, if, if Ms. Desmond could give some,
Maybe just a brief?
Some opinion right now and I wait for the report for next meeting.
Okay, through Mr. Superintendent, lieutenant to Ms. Desmond?
Ms. Desmond?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Lee. The after dark program is, has started again this year. It is a program that began back in collaboration with the superintendent of Greater Lowell and myself and the Title I Director of the Greater Lowell Technical School. And at, at the beginning, we had two threads that ran, two offerings that ran. And in the four years that the program has been running, we have added multiple areas of focus for our students. Currently, we have information technology, automotive, HVAC. And this year, we have added metal fabrication slash welding. And so, you know, we are excited about adding that new track and we will continue to look to see how we strengthen and grow that program. It starts for students in their junior year and supports students through their senior year and then also through some work training programming so that they are able to earn the same credentials a student who was in these programs would earn, who are attending Greater Lowell for, for a full-time program. What our students do is they take a lower, a smaller caseload of courses at Lowell High School so that they are able to earn the credits that are required for a Lowell High School graduation diploma. And then they, in the afternoon, around two thirty PM, get picked up and brought to the Greater Lowell Technical School so that they can, in an after-school program, take credits to earn their credentials in these tracks. And so I will provide a full report at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, on the favors, aye? Oppose, say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. That completes the motion section. We now move on to the section seven on the subcommittee report. The subcommittee report is on the policy and governance chaired by Ms. Doherty. Any report, Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Policy and Governance Subcommittee did meet on Monday, September eighteenth. In attendance were myself, Ms. June and Ms. Del Rossi, who are also subcommittee members, as well as Ms. Phillips, Ms. Desmond and Mr. Fiatto, the head of school from Lowell High School. We had basically two items on the agenda. The first one was regarding the Lowell High School graduation policy. And actually, we took it out of order, but it's, if it's okay, we'll just start, we'll go with that one or should I go back and do it in the order of the, the minutes? It doesn't matter. Well, I'm thinking the graduation one is, is, it's a weighty issue. And we discussed, Ms. Desmond made a presentation about changing the requirements that seniors get a certain number of credits their senior year. And to actually mirror what the state does, it should be more about the total amount of credits, not that you have to have them all done in your senior year. And there was some concern that we think that this stipulation that, which is specific to Lowell, as I said, it's not a state requirement, is causing additional challenges for many of our students that are at risk anyway of completing their graduation. We're seeing much higher dropout rates than we have in years prior. I mean, some of that was exacerbated by the pandemic, but we don't seem to be recovering because these students have many challenges in their lives and if they've got the credits, they've earned the credits, we shouldn't be putting another barrier to them getting the degree. The recommendation is to bring this forward at our next subcommittee meeting as a, a reading of the policy change because it would be making the graduation requirements less in, intent on your attendance senior year if you've got the credits. And it would be a case-by-case basis. The guidance councils would all be aware of it. It's not like students would just stop attending school once they, you know, have the credits. But if they have a situation that they're unable to attend and, I mean, take electives or whatever, that they would be able to have a, a process to enable them to graduate. So, at this point, I would be making a recommendation for the full committee that we see the first reading of this policy change. So at this point, I would be making a recommendation for the full committee that we see the first reading of this policy change at our next meeting, which would have any language and stuff in it. So you could be clear on what we were doing and and the reasons behind it. I I don't feel like I'm doing a very good job of explaining it. So certainly, if anyone has questions or if Ms. Desmond wants to add anything to that, I I myself, we had a lot of questions at the Subcommittee, which is why we have Subcommittee meetings. And I was assured that this is going to be something that will have a really positive impact for those high-risk students. And I don't have to preach to you guys. You know, without a high school diploma, your your path is very difficult in order to become, you know, an active participant, get a good job, be able to support yourself and your family, all those things that we want for our students. And my understanding that the administration has worked carefully to craft this so that it is a supportive option with flexibility for those students who need it. And at that point, I would just make that in the form of a motion that we move forward with a a first reading of a policy change regarding the graduation requirements. And again, emphasize, we will be aligned with what the state does. We're not doing something other than the state. We're trying to support our most at-risk students. And then if, I don't know if you want to discuss that, and then we can go to the next issue, which was also somewhat worthy of discussion, cellphone at the high school. So I I would pause at this point.
Sure. You have a motion on the floor? Any, a second to the motion by Mr. Lay? Any discussion on that? Ms. Morn?
So we can anticipate then at our next meeting, we'll get the written policy and then we'll be able to kind of go through it at that point? Okay, perfect. That's great. Thank you.
No other comments on the favor say aye opposed say no the ayes have it motions carry. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. For clarity, Ms. Martin, you you want to receive that new policy at the next Subcommittee meeting or the next full meeting?
If we're gonna do it at the next full meeting, that'll be the first reading at the next meeting, then we should get it as part of our regular packet for that meeting, right?
For our next general, yeah. Thank you.
That's my understanding.
I think we want to move
Ms. Dory? Yeah, continue, please.
So the second item, which we did first at the Subcommittee meeting, was the cellphone policy specifically at the high school. And we use that word policy loosely because I could not find, and I know our recording secretary did a deep dive search for a number of us to see what is the Lowell Public Schools' policy about cell phones, like across the board. So down the road, we're need, we're gonna need to codify and have something in writing. But this is really more a change to the Lowell High School handbook. It's just specific to the high school at this point. And there were, again, a lot of questions and concerns and discussion around this. We had a task force of teachers from Lowell High who presented to us, who've been working on this with students to really come up with something that they felt was going to get buy-in from the teachers, which is huge. Everybody's got to be on the same page. And it does seem sort of radical, but I know there are other districts that are doing it. And what it is, instead of in the past just telling people, put your phone away in class, it's actually collecting the phones. Right? And then for that 45-minute class period or 50-minute class period, the phone is locked away in a box that everybody can see. Then you don't have the problem of people looking at texts or, and the constant, this was one of my questions that I asked at the meeting, which I'm sure other people would share, isn't it more disruptive to collect them and have to pass them back? And the answer from the teachers and the administrators who were there was, it's actually one-time disruptive. When you come in, we do it quickly. Everybody gets on board. They know what's happening, as opposed to periods through the class. Johnny, put the phone away. Or, you know, Bill, you're, I can see you're texting. You know, constant interruptions was actually takes away more class time. And so that was the feeling. There is some, you know, we're cautious about what we're doing. So the discussion revolved around, let's get some data. We'll do it for this year. The high school is anxious to get started on the policy because you know, once you you set an expectation from the very beginning and it's consistent, which is going to be huge for this to be successful, that equals a success. But if we keep delaying it, they're not going to be able to really get that kind of buy-in that they need from the staff and from the students. So the recommendation of the Subcommittee was to, and I'll make that in the form of a motion, to ask the committee to allow the high school to move forward with this handbook adjustment to the cellphone issue. Coming up with a policy for the whole district is another day, another discussion. But the caveat to that is that at the end of the school year, we're gonna get a report about how did it work? Are there tweaks they want to make? They might decide, yes, it was exactly what we thought it was gonna be, or no, these are some changes. But to just be able to implement something, because hands down, nobody disagrees, the cell phones are a problem in school. They are a problem. They are impacting teachers' ability to do their job and students to stay engaged and connected. So I know that one seems a little extreme too, but the thinking was we would give them a chance. They're looking, they've worked a lot of hours. I I very much am a person, I mean, I might come in with my own skepticism, but when I heard those teachers talking about what their experience had been and what their ideas were, I personally, I'm just speaking for myself, I felt that we should give them the opportunity, you know, trust their expertise and knowing the kids. And so I would be asking that tonight, that we allow that change to the handbook.
Just for summary, Madam Secretary, could you summarize that in in a form of motion on the on the floor?
I believe she just wants to have the it's really not a policy, but they're gonna update the language regarding cell phones in the handbook.
Just for Lowell High School.
Right.
And it's this year with a report at the end of the school year that'll give us a status on how it works.
Do we have a second? Let's have a second, you second, Mr. Lay, second by Mr. Lay?
I will second that. But I, before I I just want to let you know that we have a high school teacher here that he's so anxious to to talk about this policy. And I don't know if we can bend the rule by letting him talk a little bit.
We don't have a registered speaker, Mr. Lay. Would you would like to suspend the rule and have a speaker?
Suspend the rule, okay.
Issue?
Can I ask for suspension of the rule and have a the teacher?
A motion by Mr. Lay to suspend the rule, make exception on having an unregistered speaker speak on this topic.
On this?
Second by Ms. Morn. Please approach the podium. Please introduce yourself and your address.
Okay, well, thank you for giving me the time to speak. Thank you. You articulated that really well, a meeting that we had on the 18th. You cap, you know, capsulized that. And we do have a lot of interest in this. My name is Phil Como, C O M E A U. And I've been teaching at the high school for 30 years, History Department. We got together in the spring. We had a lot of momentum. Mike Fiatto was a great leader, led a great charge on, we had four committees, we had 40 staff looking at everything from cellphone addiction to the consequences of the new policy and all that. So we had a survey that went out, 70% of teachers were on board. And as we looked through the state, it seems like on the news, every other week, there's a new public school that has a, implementing a new policy with cell phones. Ours in comparison to that is pretty moderate. These schools seem to be having a policy where they have a centralized location. Students enter the building first thing in the morning, lock them up for the day, retrieve them at the end of the day. We have a class-by-class policy. We have a, each teacher will get a container, 25, 30 slots. Each student, Johnny has number five, will come and put the phone in the slot. At the end of the period, he'll retrieve it. It's moderate in the sense that students still have an hour and 20 minutes of the day to be on their phones. Passing between classes, advisory, which we're not going to touch, homeroom advisory, and lunch period. So we feel that's more than adequate time to be on the cell phones. We're hoping to do this as soon as the better. We we're not on the cutting edge anymore of being one of the first schools to do this, but as Mike Fiatto says, we'd be in the current, we'd be in the in the stream. We don't want to be on the back end in a year or two and say, geez, we fell behind the Merrimack Valley on the cellphone policy. And time is of the essence. I mean, this is really needed on the, on behalf of the staff and and students. Devices are too powerful, you know, the phones themselves, even if they were shut off on silent mode, on your, on your person, that's a three or four-minute distraction just by getting a vibration. And you can imagine if the dozens and dozens of notifications that students get per day and how much of a disruption that is in the course of a day. There's an equity issue also with students. This is a nationwide, you know, studies that we see, but also anecdotally at the school. Students who need more support and resources tend to be on their phones more, tend to have a more difficult time detaching from their phones. So we see that as a as an equity issue. We see another equity issue. I mean, private schools have banned phones for a long time. We feel those students don't deserve that much more protection and concern over their phone use than our students. We have a lot of pride in our our students. We're responsible for them during the school day. We don't have a lot of control, obviously, when they go home and they they're on for hours and hours. And but in our domain during the school day, we we feel responsible, we have control over that time period. Excuse me, the mental health issue is a real one. When 2010, when we saw a spike in mental health, specifically anxiety and depression, almost a hockey stick curve go up like that. At the same time, cell phones came out, 2010. So there's a lot of connections between the two. And so we have to acknowledge that also. But the goals would be for deeper learning and stronger teaching. And it's not punitive. It's not about punishing the kids. It's about having better lessons and all teachers being on board. Excuse me one second. Excuse me, just to wrap up, thank you again for your time for allowing me to speak. But it's not punitive. It's not about punishing students. They get it. It's not 2020, the Wild West with phones and it was, you know, as a pacifier and just kids were on their phones all the time. And there was a COVID era, so we kind of allowed a lot of it. Now they they kind of understand now that. It's been a couple of years though. Teachers are doing their own individual policies, very hodgepodge. Mr. Johnson across the hall is doing something stricter than I am. He has a wall container, students put them in. I may call assistant principal, call a parent. So it's very mixed and it's very uneven. And students get that impression. It's that's which is not healthy. So we're just looking for a really uniform, consistent way to do it. And the boxes provide us that opportunity to do the the life lessons we're trying to get across to impulse control. You know, that's something that we don't need students like every five, 10 minutes having to look, having to like, having to dislike something. They have to stand on their own two feet and have the patience. And there's a time and a place, of course, for the phone. We're trying to implement portrait of a graduate at the high school. We're trying to implement life skills like that. And we have a lot, just to wrap up, there are a lot of great kids that we teach. And we want to unleash their potential. We want them to be, you know, not hiding behind their phones, being being able to look eye to eye with you and stand up on their feet and be present. And if we give them the opportunity, a lot of times we underestimate their compliance on things like this. There'll be resistance. But we need to trust them at some point. And they they are getting it. And there's a strong policy in a lot of the middle schools. So they come out of the springboard to ninth grade and they kind of get the idea of what we're trying to do, that we're not trying to punish them. We're trying to be on board with them with better lessons, more engagement. And it's about building relationships with the students. And a way to break sometimes or damage relationships is if we have individual policies, students will, they'll be a tug-of-war with phones and I might collect them, someone else sends them to the house office. We have four different vice principals. And that can create animosity right in the beginning of the school year. I do it differently than this person, my neighbor teacher to this teacher. And having a uniform policy kind of takes away the discrepancy. And we have the support now. Desi has offered to give resources to pilot programs like this. So we feel like the the trend is is Desi there, the teachers are on board, a lot of the students are also.
Mr. Como, I know you're wrapping up. Your time's up now as well.
And that's, that's how I wanted to end, building relationships
Absolutely.
with strong engagement. And it's it's the time, it's the time to do this now. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for being here. Speak on topic. Thank you. Ms. Thompson, did you have your hands up early on?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I had a few questions. I did actually watch the the Subcommittee. And this is something that I've had a lot of phone calls about, actually. I've had a lot of teachers who really do not want to do this. And I'm going to explain the why behind this. And I'm not saying that there's not, there's not a reason to do it or not to do it. But the feedback was they don't want the liability of watching phones or turning their back to write something on the board. If a phone is stolen, damaged, whose liability is that on? Is this mandated? And if so, does this have to change their job descriptions? Does a union then have to get involved in that because of the change? Slots or boxes, who's keeping them clean? Are there slots? If they're doing boxes or if they're putting them in boxes and a kid is angry and throws the thing in there and then now cracks a screen, again, who's liable for that? So there are lots of questions surrounding liability. But also, the, I think somebody had made a mention to this during the Subcommittee was if, for example, there was a shooting, it would be the responsibility of the teacher to take the entire lockbox with them outside of the of the classroom. So again, I think there's just a little angst or anxiety about the expectations of teachers that did not anticipate having to do this and the damage and the cleanliness. So if, I don't know if anybody can speak to that, but that's what I have heard many, many times over.
With all due respect, we had a 70% approval of the survey, the teachers that were willing to do it.
That's why I said, I agree. That's why I said 30% said they did not want to do it. So I'm just, I'm speaking, I'm just speaking towards the students. I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to go back and forth. I'm just saying, this is what I was hearing from from teachers that were, they were concerned about this. So I'm just curious, have we, do we know if there are any, and maybe this is a Dr. Hall question, are there any union implications to changing or making something now mandatory on a teacher's contract that was not prior?
Through Mr. Superintendent to Dr. Hall?
Dr. Hall? I would say there wouldn't be significant challenges, but I would rather discuss it in another forum.
Any other discussion?
I wonder if the Superintendent or if Ms. Desmond would like to weigh in because I I was aware during the Subcommittee meeting, they talked about the survey they did with teachers. And I felt, you know, 70, you're not gonna, I mean, maybe you can get 100%, but something new, 70% seemed like a a good level of buy-in, especially when right now we have such a hodgepodge. There are teachers that are doing nothing. Right? So I I don't know if Dr.
Mr. Como, if if I could, if that's just a protocol of the meeting here.
Okay.
I I thank you for being here to speak on the topic, but there's really no discussion between the speaker and the members. So I apologize. Thank you for being here. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. The, if you if you think back to the Rubik's Cube, for example, Rubik's cubes, when they were all the fashion, you know, students were distracted by them in the classroom, not many, but the few kids that were into that. And, you know, teachers had to say, no Rubik's cubes in my classroom. Students in the middle school went through a fad of Pokemon cards. You felt really mean, but you had to say, you cannot bring Pokemon cards to school. They're forbidden, right? Cell phones have gotten biased. They've gotten past us. Our culture has developed and evolved in such a way that, you know, cell phones are the most distracting of all, you know, trinkets or toys or, and they're not trinkets or toys, I know that, but I'm just saying, our mission, we are here tonight, we go to work each day to educate students. That's what it's all about, right? And and we have something in our midst, in our culture, right in the classroom, every single one of them, that's distracting our students. The state is also concerned and is encouraging experimentation. And so I think that the questions Ms. Thompson asked are, you know, prescient and and need to be considered. And but I think we should not hold the high school back from attempting something. We're not asking to put this in policy. We're asking to allow the high school to experiment with, I have never seen, by the way, the amount of teacher We're asking to allow the high school to experiment with, I have never seen, by the way, the amount of teacher collaboration and, and development of this, this idea as, as, as has happened in this case. I urge the committee to allow the high school to, to experiment.
Ms. Thompson.
So I'm not saying not to do it. I'm literally just saying we want to make sure the teachers are protected from any liability should it be an issue. Again, I don't know what happens if somebody takes somebody's phone in the classroom, then is there an issue with that? If they turn and they're doing something on the board, a kid just swipes a phone and then walks out with the newest iPhone and they came in with something a little different. And then I was also wondering if the, and I didn't hear this in the subcommittee, did they address watches? Because yeah, I gave them my phone, but I have a watch. So I don't care if you have my phone. I could still do the same thing on my watch. So I don't know if that also covers that as well.
Thank you. So I'm going to leave it two parts on the liability. One is teachers cannot be held liable for something that we're asking them to do. Now, maybe the head of school, maybe the superintendent, maybe the school committee, right? But teachers won't be liable for doing something that's part of their job and that we've encouraged them to do, right? On the other hand, we, we live in a litigious, litigious society. Somebody could be sued for anything at all, right? For the wrong, wearing the wrong shoes or closing this classroom door incorrectly or whatever, right? But, but I, but it, the liability issue is a moot point as far as the teachers are concerned. So I don't, I hope that answers your question.
Yes, Ms. Thompson. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to thank Mr. Cuomo for giving a passionate explanation why we should support this motion. I, I support the motion and I also feel that what Ms. Thompson said is very interesting. We should not do this without considering the alternative. So, you know, I, I feel that we, we may have the, to write, to write the policy in a way that satisfy both sides. So I think it's possible to do. Therefore, I think I feel positive. I feel good about moving forward with this. Thank you.
Mr. Rossi.
Thank you. I know a lot of teachers at the high school have implemented this already and it's working in their classroom, which I believe is 100% fabulous because there's no doubt that cell phones is, are absolutely a problem with student learning. Although with phones come parents who own them and parents who feel safer with their students having phones because it's their first line of communication. The parents own that phone. So I really believe even as a teacher, you can't teach a kid unless your parent is on board with you. Once you have that collaboration, you'll be good. So I just feel as though we need to get parents on board to sign off on this. Because if we don't have our parents on board, then you still have that division between child, parent, teacher, instead of what the next door neighbor teacher's doing. And it's not that I don't support this and it's not that common sense wise, I don't understand the value of this. It's that I see an issue forward with the parents that I've spoken with that don't want their children to not have a phone in the high school. And if we're going to go ahead with this, then I think we need to go ahead with this and get parent approval. And I think teachers who are doing it and it's working in their class, keep doing it. But to put it in a handbook without having parents on the same page as all the teachers and being okay with it, you're still going to have that division. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you. With all due respect, I think we should consider parents and how parents feel about it. And I believe that the response is that the vast majority of parents would be in support. But I think that's different from saying perhaps we should get each parent's permission. And that I don't think is a good idea. Because if you asked, just as a trivial example, we talked about field trips earlier. And if you ask every parent in the classroom, is it okay to take a field trip to the Museum of Science? You will find some parents will say no, right? So we, like, there are times, and I think this is one of them, where we as leaders in the community, as elected representatives of those parents and of the students, need to make a decision what you think is appropriate. I think this is one of those moments. And, and I encourage you to, again, not write a new policy tonight, but allow the high school to try this and report back to you about a new policy in the future.
Any other comments or discussion? Here none. We had a motion on the floor that's seconded by Mr. Lee. Madam Secretary, please roll call.
Keep in mind, this isn't a policy. It's just an update to the handbook. Ms. Rossi?
Present.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Thompson?
Present.
Ms. Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. June?
Yes.
Five yeas to present.
Does that complete your report, Ms. Doughty?
Yes, I would just ask that we put it as a report on the progress on file.
Yeah. Motion to accept the report as part of progress by Ms. Doughty, seconded by Ms. Thompson on favor of the eye, opposed by not the eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Cuomo for being here.
Just clarify what message I can send to the high school tomorrow on this. We can start. We can start doing it. Excellent. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for being here. We now go to section eight. These are the reports of the superintendent. Eight point one is the strategic goals. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we, each of us, including the superintendent, have individual goals and they've been presented, my goals have been presented. There are also goals for the organization that are typically presented at this time of the year and that support the initiatives in our strategic plan. I believe that this is customary at this time of year. The goals presented to you in your packet were developed with the collaboration of each of the cabinet members, each of the chiefs. You are welcome to consider them draft until you agree that they're suitable goals. I'll take any questions you have or any comments you'd like to make.
Any comments or questions by any of the members? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for providing us with these. I appreciate kind of in the, your introduction noting that, you know, we're really looking for these to be measurable, you know, measurable actions that we can, that we'll be able to track over the course of time. Time being the year. You know, looking through this, the, what you provided us with the goals, you know, starting with goal one with inclusive classroom practices. Just as I kind of went through all of the offerings here, I didn't see a lot of numbers. So I didn't see a lot of concrete measures saying that, for example, improving communications to schools. I just picked that out of thin blue air. You know, for that to be a real measure, we need to be able to know what communications happened this year and how many, and by how, you know, by how. How and why and by, we're going to be able to track the difference in the next year. You know, and I think we, you know, we've had these conversations, obviously, with the previous superintendents. I just think that if you could take a pass through it again, I've made this request before. Even if it's just within each one, there's one kind of numerical concrete goal. It allows us the opportunity to have something that we can really make a comparison and be able to determine. You know, we're increasing opportunities for vertical alignment between schools and early education programs. Yes, I'm in favor of that. How do we measure it? So that, that is my only request. I appreciate you kind of presenting this as a, as a draft, which gives us an opportunity to fine tune things. And that would be my biggest request that, you know, certainly at the end of the year, when we're going to be going through evaluations and, and everything else. If we, the earlier we have kind of what we're grading on, the earlier we have the rubric, the, you know, the, the performance standards, all that. It's easier certainly for you and your team, as well as for the, the committee to kind of be able to track that. So I'd make that as a request. If you could kind of take a pass and then come back with, with some, you know, some updates.
Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment that I think it's a very sensible ask and it should be included that we, we sometimes refer to in schools, SMART goals. And, and M is for measurable. I used the term myself in a memo, but, but I, I'd be happy to come back with a, with a review. Thank you.
Any other comment, Ms. Doughty?
Thank you. I just want to echo what Ms. Martin said. First off, I love the goals. I think they're all exactly what we should be focusing on. But I think there are some that lend themselves more easily to numbers and data. And I'm, I'm looking at goal number two, the operational proficiency, diversity recruitment and hiring. You know, that, that's one that would be easy to look at, you know, how, and in that might, we might also look at, which we'll be discussing later. The, a number of, of hires that are come in, coming in without the required licensure, either emergency or provisional. To talk about how many of those people move through completing licensure. You know, that would be one way to measure that. Mental health and wellness under the ensure every school is safe and welcoming. That one, again, by finally doing that, we had asked for an audit, I think it was two years ago, to, to actually be implement, getting an audit, implementing some, you know, improvements by having this outside party give us suggestions about how to make those improvements. But I do agree that if we could measure them, it would be so much better than just saying, you know, we improved student learning or we made schools safer. Where's the evidence of that? And as, as much as you can find that, I think it would be much more meaningful for everyone. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson.
The only additional thing is as, if you could, as you go through some of this, and again, I was pointing to the one Ms. Doherty just mentioned, which is the diversity recruitment and hiring. If you could also, as you give that type of information, talk about what types of jobs people were hired in. So that we're aware of where those diversity hires are impacting the district. That'd be great as well.
I want to understand that the ask to, you're suggesting that instead of just simply saying diversity hiring, that we break it down by category of job? Is that the idea?
Correct. Thank you.
Mr. Rossi.
I'd just like to see something in here about improving the conditions of the buildings across the system. Due to the poor conditions of all of the buildings right now. And I thought I might see that in improved operational efficiency across the system, but I did not. So if you could just add something to that point, please.
Mr. Superintendent.
It would be helpful, Mr. Rossi, to, to have a specific ask, meaning, you know, if it's an improvement to some condition that requires the city, we don't have agency over that, right? And so I want to commit to things that we can be responsible for. Is there something specific that would be helpful?
Yes. I guess whatever the facilities department in the school department is in charge of, what, what they have control over. And that you could report on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Doughty.
And just along with that, I think under your goal number three, you do have capital improvements, right? Maximizing the ESAR funds for facility improvements, the STEM thing, STEM project improvements. I think there's an opportunity there to talk about, like, for me, it's been a huge issue that we don't have operable windows. We don't have screens. We don't have shades. And, you know, that would be a place to be able to give us actual measures of how we have improved the schools for our kids. Or like the lockers at the Bartlett School that we had a motion for, you know, that these things are actually happening.
Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you. I'm happy, I think, Mr. Rossi had it slightly different. In other words, I think you're talking about the condition of the buildings and you want us to work on that. And Ms. Doughty, you're referring to sort of capital improvements. And so I, I'm happy to work on windows, for example, but that is something we need to work in partnership with the city on. And another feature of these goals is they say, we want to commit to doing this work this school year. You know, I could tell you, for example, I, I'd like to commit to air conditioning for classrooms. I know darn well that not, I hope we can achieve that this year. I'm committed to planning for it. But, but so the, the windows and capital improvements, that we want to only commit to what we can challenge ourselves to complete this year.
Any other comments or questions on this report? Here none. We'll now move on to the next report on the MCAS and accountability report. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the interest of time, I won't walk you through every detail here. But there, there are several comments I could make and I think it might be helpful if the committee members have questions that I just take them and tailor my remarks to areas of interest for you.
Any comments or questions by any of the committee members? Ms. Doughty.
In fact, we would do a deeper dive to truly understand where have we seen movement? Where are we stagnant? What are we doing about it? Because I know we're not the only ones in this position. That, you know, school districts across the state have not made the kind of recovery we had all hoped. I would just recommend that we do it in, if I dare say this, in a curriculum subcommittee.
I think that's fine.
I mean, that's how we used to do it. And then we could really talk more nitty gritty than just, well, we've seen some improvement here. But actually looking at the numbers and, and more important than just looking at the numbers and where we see the, the greatest challenges, the smallest movement or whatever, however you want to look at it, is to get your thinking, the administration thinking about how we're going to come out of this. Because we've been throwing a lot of money at trying to help our students make up for all the losses because of the pandemic. And again, we're not the only ones in this boat. But we do know districts and we do know specific schools who have been able to do better. So what are, what are the best practices telling us? And I, I think the subcommittee would be a good forum for that, but I'm, I'm open since I'm not even.
There'll be a motion by Ms. Doughty to send a report to the curriculum subcommittee, seconded by Ms. Martin. Any discussion on it? Ms. Martin?
I would just say, just to echo those same thoughts, I, you know, I do think this warrants a deeper dive to give us an opportunity to really understand the data. You know, a lot of this is kind of, you know, a thousand paper cuts. There's, this is up this much, but this is down the, you know, so it's really, understanding what's truly significant, I think, is, is important. But I think to Ms. Doherty's point, I care way more about what we do next. You know, this is the information. It's important that we understand it, that the district understands it. But what we really need to know is what happens next. What do we do to fix the, the problems that we know are here, you know? So I would just say in a, in a subcommittee environment, it would give us the opportunity to do that.
I know, Mr. Superintendent, I know this is going to be further discussed in the subcommittee, so if people can hold off all the comments to the subcommittee, it'd be great. But Mr. Superintendent, if you have a quick comment on this?
Brief comment. I want to acknowledge what the school committee members have said. And I want to assure you that this isn't, this is a report of the results, like basically, this is, this is just the results, right? We have begun an analysis in the data office and so we'd love to share that as well. And I wanted to just acknowledge, the, the requests are very sensible. It's what you do. This is just sharing the data with you, but it's like, what are you going to do next is what? So we need to analyze that, come up with some of the answers to questions like the ones you're asking, and then come back and say, here's what we think we can do to correct them. A subcommittee, I agree, would be a good forum for that. Thank you.
Motion on the floor to send to the curriculum subcommittee, seconded by Ms. Martin on favor of the eye, opposed by not the eyes have it. Motion carries. The next superintendent report is on the, is item eight point three. It's on the ASAR spending update. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's unfortunate that Ms. Turner is unable to be with us tonight and to, to speak about the, the report. So I recommend that we defer, perhaps send it to a subcommittee if that meets the needs of the school committee.
I, I agree with Mr. Superintendent. There's a lot of questions to be discussed with the CFO. Need a motion to refer this to the subcommittee, the appropriate subcommittee by Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Seconded by Ms. Doughty on favor of the eye, opposed by not the eyes have it. Motion carries. Mr. Rossi, you got other questions on this one?
Yes, I did have a question.
The CFO is not here to discuss it. Can we wait and discuss it when the CFO is here?
Yes. Well, I was also just wondering why, in the permission to enter, because we took a lot out of order. Why we're paying the Abrams groups to provide accounting services to review internal controls of the finance system if we do have a CFO? I guess that was my question.
So, Mr. Superintendent, if it could.
Thank you. We believe that there are numerous efficiencies that we can achieve in, in the finance office, including with collaboration with, with the city, including with developing and putting in place new practices for ordering, purchase orders, payroll and so forth. There's a lot of sort of modernizing that can happen. The, the Abrams group request that was in the permission to. that was in the permission to enter, is something that's supported very much, Mr. Rossi, by the CFO, and she, she understands and welcomes that opportunity to learn about how we can build more efficiencies in our finance system.
Thank you.
We'll take one more comment, again, just remind the, the members, this would be further discussed in detail in the subcommittee.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I was just curious if that, that same thing is of, of the four, I know we have four types of audits for the finance department, is that one of those that we are already having, or this is an additional one to the four audits that we have?
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, I don't know what the other four are, I do know that this one is different, that there are required audits, there's an end-of-year report that a group called Powers and Sullivan does, and so forth, by routine, they happen annually, this is different, this is one that we've asked for, to help us, give us some recommendations.
Okay, thank, thank you, Ms. Thompson, and, oh, that was a quick, long discussion, we, we, I think we took a vote on it already, so we'll now move on to, these are the reports on motion, 8.4 is report on motion by Ms. Doherty regarding animal cruelty, Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor, I just want to say, thank you very much, this was an excellent, packed with information, yet concise report, and I just want to remind everybody that this came from students at the Wang School, this was their civics project, to increase the community's awareness around cruelty to animals, and, and, and I loved the way, I think it was Dr. Duda who wrote the report, included the, the books that have been assessed, and just different ways that we can integrate this at all levels at the district, and I want to give a special thanks to the students at the Wang School, who did a great job presenting this civics project last spring, thank you.
Any other discussion? None, on favor, no, the next one is 8.5, this is a response to the motion by Ms. Doherty regarding TV studio, studio programming at Lowell High School, Ms. Doherty?
Yes, I read the report, and I can't seem to find it with my notes on it, so I'll just say, off the top of my head, what I remembered is, right now, we have one, so the motion was to explore increasing dual enrollment opportunities with Middlesex Community College around their TV and film programs, and the report kind of went off in a, a little bit different tangent, it didn't focus as much on that as I would have liked, but my understanding is, right now, we have a new course that's been developed at the high school, that has 134 students, if I'm remembering correctly, which is great, because you, we all know we had that beautiful TV studio, and it wasn't being completely utilized, and they could talk about one course with Middlesex Community College, so actually threw you to the superintendent, or Ms. Desmond, whoever feels better, to tell me, can we get further updates on this, because I think that, I know for myself, my intention was more to build that, that Middlesex Community College has a very robust TV and media curriculum, and to build so that more of our dual enrollment students are getting involved, I think that number was only 34, is that correct? From, because I don't have the report right in front of me?
Mr. Superintendent?
Oh, 46, oh yeah, here it is, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, that's not it.
Ms. Desmond?
So, I, I think there were a few questions that were asked at the time that the motion was being discussed, I think, as, if I recall, one was around the staffing, because there was an opening, and so, there has, the committee met and has recommended someone for hire for that position, so that should be wrapped up, you know, once HR does all of the processing relatively soon, so that, I think that was number one. Number two was the question about Middlesex Community College, and partnering with Middlesex Community College, and then I think, on the floor, there was also a question around LTC, and so we tried to incorporate all of those items into this one report, just because I know that some, there were some additional questions when the motion was being discussed. I, from my understanding, in working with Jessica Davis O., who is the chair for Fine Arts, and she oversees the, this department as well, because it is digital media, and that is part of, of the Fine Arts Department, there, so we've grown the program, so that there are, as you can see, in 2024, we have 180 students in this, in this program now, whereas, you know, back in 2019, we were down to, I think, 32 students, so we're working to grow the program, and, and in doing that, we have to be able to provide students with various courses, so that they are actually able to take those courses and, and grow at Middlesex Community College, so the idea is for them to be able to access the initial course, and then have the background to take additional courses, so we are working through, with Middlesex Community College, to see how we can grow the advanced coursework, but again, we have to have prerequisite coursework done for our students, and so, although it's, we would love to grow all of these programs really quickly, we have to provide students with the background to be able to access the next courses, so it is within our plan to continue to explore that relationship, and continue to add advanced coursework for our students, but again, we need our, our students to be able to go through the prerequisite work, and so that's sort of where we are at this point, but yes, we're very open to growing this program, this is a really important program, and once the high school is renovated, we're going to have access to even more digital media and, and so forth, I mean, the technology is changing so quickly, that we are trying to stay ahead of it through this programming, so we've done, I think, a really nice job trying to grow this program, especially in the last couple of years, and I'm really excited about being able to find someone who is excited to take on this role, that has, has just recently become vacant, so I think, you know, again, we are looking at all our partnerships, and we are looking at growing the program, but again, we have to provide students with prerequisite knowledge to be able to do that.
Thank you, excellent.
You're awesome, Ms. Doherty, Ms. Thompson?
Thank you so much for this report, I think it's so important that we have these technical offerings for our students, for, for, you know, the interested students, and I look forward to seeing how you are able to roll it out, because all the program we can give, all the variety we can give, is going to really make a difference, so thank you so much.
Any other comments or questions on this motion response, here none, we now go to the next motion response, item 8.6, this is a motion response to Mr. Rossi regarding incoming immigrants, any comment, Mr. Rossi?
Thank you very much, Ms. Krakauer-Berg, for that, it's very detailed, and it seems like you guys are ready to place students who come in, I think the next challenge would probably be busing, placing them in schools, but, but thank you, it's a very detailed report, and I appreciate it very much.
Any other comments, Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor, I guess the thing that jumped out at me is, we still don't have any idea how many children, is there any timeline that, that we've been told?
Mr. Superintendent?
There, there is no timeline, and there's no information on your, your question, we, we know of different scenarios through some community partners, where similar episodes have occurred in the past, and where, you know, a number of families was estimated only to be significantly increased shortly thereafter, we really just don't have any, we, I was going to say, we don't have any firm information, we don't have any information, really, there's speculation about how this may work, there's speculation that it's, it's possible that the, that the state may use ICC as a health assessment area, so that families would stay there only for a very short time, while students are given immunizations and so forth, and then moved out to more permanent living, in, maybe in Lowell, but also in other communities, that's information we learned through community partners, nothing from the state, nothing around numbers, or, or how many, or when we should expect them.
Any other comments, Ms. Thompson?
I was just curious, and this is a thorough report, I had two questions, what, what was the thought process about integrated language supports and cultural supports that are going to be needed, and again, we're hearing potentially that it could be a Haitian-Creole Venezuelan population potentially, but that could, you know, that could pivot, and then my second question was, I noticed that there are, all the schools are not listed, is that because there are very limited seats in those, or is the, were those particular ones just because of the proximity to, to the ICC center?
Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, the, the question about language supports and so on, you, you fairly much see our, the extent of our planning so far, we're doing some additional planning as well, like scenario planning, if we don't know how many are coming, we are going to do some estimate, what if it was 150, and like, how would we do, and, and so on, so we're, we're doing some scenarios, working on that, but nothing directly around language dominance and so on, because we're not sure what, what those needs will be, the reason that you see some schools and not others, is that, that this plan so far anticipates that we would use Zone 2 schools, and, and citywide schools, and the reason for that is transportation, so the, the ICC is in an area that we can access Zone 2 schools, and, and citywide schools, and so that, that's how we anticipate accommodating the, the new arrivals.
Any other comments? Here none, that completes the motion response, we now move on to item 8.7, on personnel report, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this report was put together by Dr. Hall, it's lengthy, as you can see, again, I think it would be beneficial, instead of my taking you through it, to offer, we will take, and Dr. Hall will take questions you may have.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, so, we had received this tonight, it, this is the first time I had seen it, I agree, it is extensive, I'm assuming this is covering a longer period than usual?
This year.
Beginning of the school, okay, what I would like to say is, I, I don't feel comfortable, like, accepting it at this point, just because I, looking through it, usually, again, at the beginning of the year, I like to take an opportunity to be able to see if there are any trends, in terms of turnover at schools and things like that, I haven't had a chance to look at it to see that, so if I could, ask if we could table this till our next meeting, I'd make that in the form of a motion to, if my colleagues.
Okay, I don't even need a motion, could just table it, if that's okay by the administration, correct? Could just table that?
Certainly, and, the idea to table it, and put it back, bring it back at, on the agenda of the next meeting.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Wonderful, Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor, so, there's a second part to this motion, that is in response to, I'm, to this report, that is in response to a motion I had, asking for information about the number of hires by position, that were, with explanations, for positions that were filled with people who have emergency, provisional, or temporary license, other than the full license that's required in the job description, so this, I'm going to ask, since we're tabling it, I would like to get more information, that really speaks to the heart of the information I'm trying to get, and just to tell you, first of all, the positions are, I'm assuming, everyone listed here is someone who was hired without the required licensure, that's why they're on this report, which I don't know how many pages it is, but they're not numbered, and they're not broken down, so I can tell you, I counted, there are 104 positions since July 1, that were hired with people that did not have the required licensures, and the explanation, some explanations were more specific than others, there was a social, and, oh, and Lowell High had 21 positions, and the Robinson School had 17, and I think that's significant, in terms of looking at, many of the schools, the Pine had one, the Bridge had one, you know, many of the schools did not have as many positions, and I'm just looking through, McCullough had two, Merkland had two, Moody had one, I think we really want to get a handle on this idea of, we want to hire people that have the required licenses that are in our job descriptions, and so, part of doing that is having a more robust report, that gives us accurate information, that really, like, information that tells us, was it a provisional license, was it emergency, what was, what's the status, some of them said, the required, is awaiting official licensure status, so has completed the required MTEL, MTEL, sorry, and, like, how about, when are we going to get that status? Because years ago, it was our, and I think it's still our responsibility, as a hiring person, as the employer, to follow these people and make sure, did you take the MTELs? Did you pass? What else do you need to do? Okay, you've worked as a math teacher for a year, what have you done to get closer to getting licensure? So we need more information, and I have to tell you, I thought 104 was a high number, and I know we talked about having shortages of powers, shortages of math and science teachers at the middle level, but I didn't know there were shortages for all of these kind of positions, and maybe there are, but when you say to me, the hiring authority believed these candidates were the most qualified, there were four special education teachers hired at the Addy Day School, oh, I counted that as one, so that's a higher number, too, I want to know, nobody with a licensure applied? Or, you know, I, I, I think we need more information, and how many employees do we, how many staff do we have, off the top of our head, is it 1200?
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Ms. Doherty, I want you to receive a response, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hall for that, but can I just say first, before we move on, questions are very welcome, I don't want to miss the opportunity to say, an incredible amount of recruitment and hiring has occurred, and, and I don't know that that's fully appreciated, the amount of work and effort that's gone into that, there are numerous, numerous communities, not far from Lowell, that are struggling to fill vacancies, and all of our schools are, are filled with staff, it's not a concern, it's not a wonder, or a concern, that, that there's staff hired with emergency licenses, it's partly due to the persistence and the creativity of Dr. Hall and his staff recruiting and hiring as many people as we have, I, I understand it's a difficult moment, I'm not looking for praise, but I want to be fair, and I want to put it in context, there is a hiring crisis across the country, there are places in, in Massachusetts that are in difficulty filling positions, even to this day, in Lowell, I think it's been incredible work to have our school staff for the opening of school, with that, Ms. Doherty, your questions are, are, yes?
If I could just finish, I don't think we're going to get into a discussion tonight, that's not my intention, Ms. Martin has made a motion to table it, and I think we should, but what I wanted to say is, if we could have this information, so that when we discuss it, we have more information in front of us, and I have notes that I'd be happy to share with Dr. Hall about what I mean, in terms of more specifics, and numbering them so we can more easily make sense of the data, that's all I'm trying to say tonight, I don't want to discuss it.
I, I welcome those comments and questions, can we allow Dr. Hall to respond, because I want to be clear about what we, we'll produce for you, Dr. Hall?
Sure, I, I think I have to clarify that this is about emergency licenses, and DUCI classifies an emergency license as valid as any sort of license that's out there, so the principal, as it's listed here, we contacted all the principals, asked, why did you hire this candidate or that candidate, they responded in this way, that having a emergency license, we believe that this candidate was the best person for that particular job, so I just wanted to clarify that, that these aren't people that, in DUCI's eyes, should not have been hired, they have an emergency license, which qualifies as a license, as compared to an initial license, as compared to any sort of permanent license to compete for that position, I do agree that we should have some sort of program or monitoring, where we can provide mentoring and aid to those with emergency licenses, to continue their careers and get fully licensed, I think that would be a great use of resources, but I also want to stress, too, that when DUCI's created this emergency license program, that that's had an adverse impact, too, where people have not pursued as quickly an initial license or a provisional license, because this emergency license is available, and also, within this report, a lot of these people may have other licenses, but have an emergency license in the field that they're hired for, I did talk to, I guess, some HR experts, so to speak, and I do know you want more detail, I would have a problem with identifying individual people with clarity, where we would be perceived to be talking about why a principal decided to hire a particular person, I don't think that's productive for the school department going forward, and I think it would have an adverse impact on our workforce. And I think it would have an adverse impact on our workforce. So that's, that's why the level of detail is here in some, right now.
I just want to remind the members that we are tabling this for the following meeting discussion. Ask that, we'll just table this. At this point, we'll complete the discussion. Need a motion to accept the reports of the Superintendent, 8.1 through 8.6. Again, 8.7 is being tabled. Reports of progress by Ms. Thompson, second by Ms. Martin, on favor of the eye. Oppose, say no, the eyes have it. Motion's carry. The next line item is 8.8, Home Education. Any questions or comments? Here none. Madam Secretary, roll call, please. Ms. Thompson, and I believe it's Ms. Martin.
Okay. Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Thompson? Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
The next line item is the new business. 9.1 is the budget transfer of $54,823. Any comments or questions on this one? Motion to approve by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Rossi. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Thompson? Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun? Seven yeas.
The next line item is overnight request Lowell High School Outdoor Adventures Club. No discussion. Motion to accept and approve by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Chun. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doherty? Ms. Delay? Ms. Martin? Ms. Thompson? Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun? Seven yeas.
The last item on the agenda is number 11, Professional Personnel. The Members of United Teachers of Lowell hereby donate 36 leave days to Stephanie Lee, Merkland School teacher. Any comments or questions? Here none. Motion to approve by Mr. Lay, second by Ms. Thompson. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Thompson? Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun? Approved. Seven yeas.
Before we adjourn, any announcement? Ms. Thompson?
I would just like to wish everybody happy Indigenous Peoples' Day, which is Monday. Important to make sure that we are learning more about our indigenous populations in Lowell and beyond.
Thank you. Any other announcement? Just want to make an announcement from the podium here. As you know, Mr. Gerard, Jared Duman, husband to Mickey Duman at the UTL,